Good evening, the time is six thirty, so I will call to order the Wednesday, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five Cedarburg School Board meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and town Cedarburg, as well as the news graphic and Milwaukee Journal-SEED. Let's close our allegiance to the flag.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin with recognitions, Dr. Clark. Oh, no, it says, say, Dr. Clark. Yes. It was today. Yeah, sorry. I'll step back.
So, the state has announced and declared the following proclamations. February second through the eighth, the Skills USA Week. February third through the seventh is National School Counseling Week. February ninth through the fifteenth is FPLA Week, and that stands for Future Business Leaders of America. And February tenth through the fourteenth is FCCLA Week, and that stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. So, all proclamations are available on the district board's webpage. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to consent agenda, Dr. Clark.
All right, with regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. De Rosa, Director of Human Resources, is here to provide an overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, School Board. A little bit of a blast from the past, thanks for being here. You're all who are in the district awhile.
We used to not have this bright light now.
Looks great on you. As you can see on the personnel report, no changes with our professional employees. We did have two changes with our support staff at Porson. I just want to acknowledge Brandon Roth and Scott May for the quick turnaround of filling these positions. They did a nice job of being very proactive and making some quick hires with minimal to no disruption to those who do experience. So, anytime you see the presentations and the fills on the same sheet, usually it's a good indicator that we still have enough time for that shit.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Motion and second, a very discussion. On the favor?
Hi.
And the votes? Motion passes hand this way.
All right, this evening, we have three items we would like to report onto the board. First item is a presentation from our Webster World Languages team regarding the world languages learning experiences students receive at Webster. Webster Principal Bold Dan Reiner is here to introduce the team.
Do you guys want to switch the presentation or?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, good evening. Thank you for allowing Webster to shine the spotlight tonight on our World Language Department. I will let Elizabeth introduce her team and then talk about a quick overview and some of the student experience. I'm going to be sure.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being able to present this evening. We're all very happy to be here. I'm Jean-Marc Bell, Elizabeth Young, and I teach Swedish at Webster School. So, that means my name is Elizabeth Young and I'm a French teacher at Webster School.
Buenos noches, me llamo Senor Luski, or Mrs. Luski, sorry. Amy Luski, Mrs. Luski. Muchas gusto, I'm a Spanish teacher at Webster.
Guten Abend, ich heiße Jillian Mick, und ich bin die deutsche Lehrerin von Webster Middle School. I am Jillian Mick, and I'm the German teacher at Webster Middle School.
All right, as you can see, we have three thriving, three thriving language programs at Webster, and Webster School is unique compared to other middle schools in the area in that we offer three languages versus often seeing just two or one. We have an exploratory program in sixth grade that feeds into strong Level One programs in which the students can then continue here at Cedarburg High School to Level Two, potentially ending in an AP experience in any of the three languages or experience some of the travel opportunities that are provided to students in the upper levels. You can see that we also have some of our amazing Webster language students here. We have students representing all three grades and all three languages, and they're just going to take a moment to introduce themselves as well.
Bonjour, Jean-Marc Bell, Agent Solven. My name is Aiden Solven.
Hola, senores y señoras, me llamo Liam. Hi, my name is Liam.
Hello, ich bin Emma. Or hello, my name is Emma.
Hello, ich bin Rosie. Hello, Rosie.
Hola, me llamo Evan, or my name is Evan.
Bonjour, Jean-Marc, how are you? How, how, oh my goodness. Hello, my name is Kala.
Hello, ich bin Mara, or hello, my name is Mara.
So, the World Language Department has gone through something of progression over the past decades, actually. Spanish was originally the only language offered, and in the late nineties, French and German were brought in for eighth grade only to assess interest in other languages. So, fortunately, there was, and it was at that point, that each of the three languages was offered to all three grades. There have been changes in the manner in which the frequency of the content was delivered, bringing us to our current school year and structure. One constant that remained throughout this progression is that our eighth graders will be ready for Level Two upon a successful completion with the last day of Webster and give their eighth grade.
And here's where we will focus on each grade, and we will get to hear from the students who are joining us. So, starting with sixth grade, the Webster students get one trimester in each language, which is approximately twelve weeks or about thirty days of instruction. And sixth graders, you are up.
Bonjour, my name is Kala.
Hello, my name is Mara.
Hola, my name is Evan.
We are three sixth graders here to talk about the world languages at Webster Middle School.
Webster offers three languages, Spanish, French, and German. These are two trimesters, so in sixth grade, you can try out all the languages.
Learning fun things like how to introduce ourselves, letters that they completed, numbers, and much more.
For example, I took German in the first trimester. We're going to show a con- we're going to show you a conversation with one person. Hello, ich bin Maria, nice to.
Guten Tag, ich bin Emma. I am also taking German right now in the second trimester. However, she is further along since the second trimester ends in March. I still have a lot to learn.
Ich bin Zwölfe Jahre alt. Mein Lieblingsfarbe ist Lala, und mein Lieblingstier ist das Crocodile. This means I'm twelve years old, my favorite color is purple, and my favorite animal is a crocodile.
I took French in the first trimester, so I know a few things too. Je m'appelle Kala, j'ai onze ans. Je suis allemande. J'aime chanter, et je n'aime pas jouer au basket. This means that my name is Kala, I'm eleven years old, I am German, and I like to sing, and I do not like to play basketball.
I'm taking Spanish in the second trimester right now. Here are some basic starting sentences you can use in Spanish. Hola, mucho gusto, me llamo Ivan, como te llamas? Which means, how are you called? Which I shall respond, me llamo Ivan, or I am called in English. Say goodbye, say adios amigos.
As you can see, having three languages we can pick from is really great. We can choose which language is best for us.
Plus, it's really fun to try out all these languages.
This is why our three languages at Webster Middle School, French, German, and Spanish, are the best.
Au revoir.
Auf Wiedersehen.
At the love you say.
Thank you, sixth grade. And now for seventh grade. Once the students have selected their language, the Level One course begins. The seventh graders will meet every year, every, every day, every other day, all year round, which equals about one semester, and they will complete about one-third of the Level One course. Seventh grade, it is your turn.
Hello, my name is Emma.
And I'm Rosie. We are in seventh grade. In seventh grade German, since it's a four-year class, it provides more learning materials, like learning the states and capitals of Germany and how they conjugate differently from us. Like, an example is that they have two different ways to say you. They have a formal way, sie, which is used for people with higher standards than you.
They also have an informal way, duh, that is for people like your friends or younger kids. Instead of doing notes and looking from a textbook, we play games and listen to many songs to help us remember what we were learning.
We both had a hard time learning how to pronounce different words, but from the help of Ms. Mick and other classmates, we learned the right way to pronounce it.
It was also challenging when certain words sounded like words in English but meant something different, like air sounds like hur, but it means heat. In spring of last year, me and my family hosted a German exchange student. He felt like a number, another sibling to me, especially when we went to a Brewers game. One thing I remember at the Brewers game was when he was talking to his friends from Germany. We'd speak German really fast, which I thought was really impressive and cool, so I decided to do some Duolingo trying to learn short sentences.
Finally, German is really fun, and we enjoy coming to class and learning more German.
And finally, eighth grade. Here's where the students may choose to continue in the language that they took in seventh grade, or they can choose to not continue. Fortunately, we do have, the majority of our students do like to continue on with the eighth grade year. This is where we take about two-thirds of the Level One course and finish up, and our class gets to meet every day for the entire school year.
Hello, my name is Aiden, and in eighth grade French, one of the good things to help us remember how to like speak to one another with using adjectives and describing one another. We use speaking and listening activities as a class, small group, or with a partner to help like practice with pronunciation casually with someone else. And that helps a lot. In eighth grade, technology really helps us stay in touch with the language because it makes it so all of our notes are in one place so that we can go and find them, and also makes it so that we can do recordings and listening activities and be graded on our speaking and our ability to understand the language.
So, up on the board is one of our projects in eighth grade, which was, we created an acrostic poem, which is our name, and then an adjective to describe us in French that goes across with one letter that comes through the adjective.
In Spanish, we do tons of projects. This is an example of one of mine. A las diez y veinte de la mañana, yo tengo la clase de educación física con Aiden. Nosotros necesitamos unos tenis atléticos. Yo no necesito una calculadora. La clase de educación física es muy divertida.
Another strength of our world language programs at Webster is that our courses support the learning that is going on in their other academics as well, whether it's supporting English grammar, sentence structure, concepts in history, real-life problem solving, and the arts. So, it's really nice that we can take what we do in our room and know that they can use that to support the rest of their day. And in addition to that, another critical part and an exciting part of what we do in the world language classes is to help our students develop skills that go beyond the academics. We're working on life skills through collaboration and collaborative learning. We're helping them build their self-confidence and using linguistic risk-taking, and then also global citizenship, that they are learning that they are a part of something bigger than just what we have in our community. And actually, a really nice activity that the eighth graders get to do is in that right-hand picture under global citizenship. We have the AFS exchange students come and visit us at Webster, and our eighth graders get a chance to speak to students from all countries, not just French, German, or Spanish-speaking, and they really enjoy it. It's a, it's a great and very memorable experience for the students each year. So, are there any questions for any of us about?
So, what do you, what do you do during the summer, like between seventh and eighth grades? There some continued instruction or activity?
In the summer?
Yeah, or is it, are they coming in kind of, they're kind of hard to come in?
Well, I, you know, I'd say it's pretty much just any kind of typical content area. We spend in eighth grade, since we do have the opportunity to meet every day, we do spend some time reviewing and going over some of the concepts that were covered in seventh grade to kind of get them back on track. What's nice with our eighth grade classes is that those are the students that truly want to continue, so there's that inherent interest already built in, and so we're usually ready to hit the ground running once, once school starts.
That's where they can find the, the, certain.
Oh, absolutely. When there are families that are interested in other experiences or opportunities, yeah, we're, you know, whether it's like Duolingo, I mean, students really like to be on that, and it provides them some experience with vocabulary and units structured a little differently than the way we do it in class, which is usually a great opportunity for them.
I think it's great that, you know, you're offering three different languages, that they can go through high school and, you know, have the opportunity to go through all of the three. Do you find it's pretty consistent from year to year with the percentage of kids which are very Spanish or German, or does it fluctuate, or do you find?
Um, I'd say it is pretty consistent. Spanish usually wins, so we try, Jillian and I try very hard. But usually, German and French are, you know, pretty similar, you know, with slight fluctuation from year to year, but Spanish does remain kind of the biggest group. But what's so nice is that the students who know they want to try something else can have an opportunity to try it, or even if they know they want to continue with Spanish in seventh and eighth grade, they get an opportunity to try something else first.
We also have, you know, heard about the German exchange program for the high school. Do those students come over and?
Yes, they do. So, we hosted for about three weeks in the spring, and we plan a day for those students to come to Webster, and they get to spend an afternoon with my various classes. So, we planned a couple of different activities. We spent time outside in the Webster Garden and our Webster Woods, where the students could interact one-on-one and in small groups with each other. We taught them how to play Gaga Ball and Kickball, which was really fun, and the students also had an opportunity, the German students had the opportunity to give a presentation to some of my students to help practice their English, and then we got to practice our German with them.
Um, just thank you for everybody sharing that you did. It was really fun because I keep following with the language, which is good. So, we mentioned how we can Spanish as well, but like, and German was a part of it, so. Great job. Um, but I think it's really exciting because there are major years where you have to pick multiple languages for your major, and a lot of people don't have that exposure prior to going to college, and it's a really big jump for in-class, and so I really appreciate hearing the work office, and thank you to students that presented, it was great.
I'd like to thank you students for, for coming in. I know it's not.
I didn't bring up the presentation from our auditor. Our auditor Brent Nelson from Johnson Block is joining us today to review the twenty-three, twenty-four annual audit. So, as we all know, the fiscal calendar in the school district is a very long calendar that starts in budgeting in December, and then we actually put our budget to work on July first through June thirtieth. Then in the summer, the auditors come and they audit all of those books, those July one to June thirtieth books. That takes them a couple of months to do, and then there's reporting at the back end of that. The final audit is always due December fifteenth to the DPI by the auditors. Typically have that done well before then, but they have a lot of documents that they're putting together. So, Brent is here, he has a short presentation for you, and then you'll have the opportunity to ask any questions. We did review the audit, I reviewed the audit at PNF and answered some questions there, but any additional questions, please let us know. Can we hear you, Brent?
Yep.
There we go. All right. Go ahead. Yep. Yep, thank you.
All right. But, thanks for the introduction. Yeah, Brent, I'm a partner with Johnson Block. We're, we're a part of, uh, three or four offices across the state of California. Appreciate you letting me over here. But yeah, I plan to go over a quick topic tonight. Uh, here reporting on the year ended two thirty-two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I do have seventy love page document and my favorite tips if there are any specific questions, but thought I'd keep a pretty high level of the department. So, that's included in the twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm going to share my screen.
And I'll just make a comment. The other person on the screen, Michaela, is our other auditor from Johnson Black, just so you know why that person's there.
In June, I have a district picture, some turnover, and some part of the decision, but, uh, so we were on site June, or Kim was actually with the district, uh, and then we're on site a couple days in June, and then a day or two before, uh, later in fall. Our opinion on financial statements, so the financial statements we issued, unmodified. Uh, and that's a good thing. Unmodified opinion means that, uh, nothing gave our attention to the cause of the way they worked and worked with, generally except the primary principle, so unmodified opinion is a good thing. Uh, and like Kim said, yeah, we, we were able to submit that on the report as well within the reporting deadline. Uh, there, we also have to use. The school district, that's due now, so we're looking at, we're looking at rent, hopefully this month. Uh, it's not due till March thirty-first, but we're coming up on our business season. We want to get that wrapped up this month. And as Kim said, before we went final with our, with the ultimate financial statements we gave, yeah, to Kim and any other reviewer approved those before, before we issued and filed. So, the school district, after the certifier, they were able to save the cost by the end of August. So, it's a really tight term, June thirty, at year end, and we're, we go to a lot of school districts in July, and we, so the school district got certified their number by the end of August, and then we have certified, they said, kind of basically testing what the district submitted is, is accurate based on our own. And that's one of the things we're working on, internal control report, and like specifically for the board of education. Now, that's done a little bit later. Summary and comparative look, where the general fund, the general fund makes the most difference at the school district, where the general fund stood at the June thirty in two thousand twenty-four compared to where it was the year prior, two thirty-two thousand twenty-three. So, total. The big difference is. General fund, thirty-two thousand twenty-four, we're eleven. So, that's the second. Total. Same. There was a tiny difference this year, eight years in period, the page line, the discipline, but overall change in funding, general fund, between years, that was like, with increase in funding, it's like seventy-five percent. So, uh, just to break down the expenses, the whole revenue. He's got one forty-six, it's for long-term capital improvements. Uh, so overall, the expenses arrived at, or change in funding for twenty-three blank words learned today. So, the, this will, this will get more than one one, it's more than just the general fund that has, that has served on campus, food service, uh, multiple different. Maybe that's got some private back to pay age twenty-four, the district basically prepay the ease of debt, so that, uh, drug. Eighteen to twenty percent, maybe about fifteen percent. So, just doing a quick math, that the district swung at about twenty-five percent of its annual general fund, so the difference above the threshold. This chart, but overall, just another comparative look, uh, Haxes, general fund, the biggest revenue source of the school district, uh, forty-nine percent of all revenues from, from Robert Haxes. Uh, but. Look, next, I mean, five years. The profits this year are twenty-three and four, they're, if it's a half, a little less than we did, we can reserve an order at the level of. Overall, the bell rates have dropped for this school district as below eight for all school districts, so, uh. There's, for outpaying on debt, it's going to be over two years, it's about thirty-second and a half, a lot of the situation there. Most of that. Eighteen record rate. And about sixty-five. Not, pretty much, pretty much, about forty-five. The, the state of Texas does, I don't think, has a certain issue, uh, but it's here, government there, I don't know whether we have issue with school or not, certainly not the normal area of here. The state could issue off the, or the district would first say, have to issue off the three hundred eighty-two million dollars. So, that, I don't think they did that. More should, should it ever arise. Including the general fund, it has healthy fundments. Yeah, what? This, she just said that fundment, or should avoid too much of our way, so. So. And there's another communication we sent within conjunction with our audit to the board of education. Just some, some notable. Maybe our action that we. Sorry, it's funny to read through that letter. Yes, we want to want to. Just because we know what they did this letter in the meeting. Be aware. For. Audience performance. For. The big operation. So. So the third, third college, thank you.
Um, Kim, I understand that this is the annual having this topic. I recall having such a presentation like this. Like your suggestion or a new auditor, or I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, I think so. This presentation has happened in the past with a few years ago with the board. I believe, Brent, you actually pulled this, these slides from your presentation years back with the school district. And it's recommended that the school board, at least at the Personnel and Finance Committee level, review the audit. It's a check and balance, for one thing, but it's our annual financial statement, just like you would any organization. And it's important that you, you see and review that. I'll always address the, the, the things that come up in it and, and answer your questions. And so, yeah, this, this was something that when we talked about, you know, going through what should and should be on the board agenda for year after year, you, you will expect to see this January-ish, depending on Brent's schedule. Every year, whether or not it's at PNF or the board meeting, I think we can have that discussion and again, availability too, so.
All right, well, thank you for that. Lastly, in my report, I'd like to provide the board a brief update regarding the district's school resource officers. The district has an agreement with the Cedarburg Police Department for two officers to be assigned to the district as school resource officers or SROs. For the past couple of years, Officer Casey Ward has been the SRO at the high school. And Officer Jake Bolt has served at the middle school and throughout the district. As of January 1st, Officer Ward has transitioned back to patrol. I know that I speak for all of us when I say that we greatly appreciate it working with Officer Ward and thank him for all the work he did to help keep the district safe. He will be best. Going forward, Officer Bolt is now moving to the high school. And we will be welcoming a new SRO. Earlier today, standing in the back, he's not there anymore. He had to go to the hockey game. It was, is Vlad Melnikov. He is our new SRO and he's been getting acquainted throughout the district and, and spending some time here. So we look forward to continued, we look forward to continuing a strong relationship with CPD and helping keep us safe.
All right, thank you, Dr. Clark. It's on the agenda of public comment. I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment? You wish to make public comment? Okay, good. So we'll go to the podium and I'll read a free statement. Any district staff member, district resident, parent of a district student or student enrolled in the district may comment during the public comment portion of a meeting per Board Policy 0167.3. For this meeting, the community may address the board during the public comment section of the meeting regarding topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. Individuals making public comment are reminded that they are not immune from legal consequences related to their speech. This includes, but is not limited to liability for speech that is contrary to the privacy, reputation, or due process rights of others, such as defamation or making false claims. Make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. As is, this is a public meeting. It is expected that everyone in attendance will conduct themselves in a respectful and courteous manner that models appropriate behavior for our students. Speech or conduct that is threatening or disruptive is prohibited. In accordance with School Board Policy 0167.3, comments by an individual speaker shall not exceed three minutes in duration. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. Please state the topic upon which you will be commenting. If you're under the age of 18 or are a student in Cedarburg schools, please state only your first name. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the district's website.
My name is Gina Tozer. My address is N 118 W 7362 Fairway Lane in Cedarburg. The topic I would like to discuss is the Webster pot time and homeroom resources. I'd again like to formally introduce myself to the board. My name is Gina Tozer, but while growing up and being raised here in Cedarburg, my last name is Brighamin. My father Ted grew up here as well, and when my parents were married, they decided Cedarburg would be where they would raise their family. My education began at the Cedarburg preschool before I attended Westland Elementary. From there, I would continue my education through Webster Transitional School until my final four years at Cedarburg High School, graduating with the class of 2004. In many ways, my beloved hometown is the same. In others, I'm happy to report it is quite different. There are now infinitely more ways to connect within the community and to be seen and supported. One of the unchanged constants I am most proud of is the Cedarburg School District. As a former student and lifelong community member, I can confidently say our two most precious assets are our teachers and taxpayer dollars. These two elements contribute overwhelmingly to the success of the district. As a proud district parent, I have a renewed interest in the success of the district, educating our youth. As a result, I have begun attending both the school board meetings and the curriculum meetings. And I ask the board tonight to vote in support of the current pot time resource, Character Strong, and reflect both the recommendation from the Webster administrative team as well as the $51,000 in taxpayer money already spent supporting this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to item six, which is recommendations. Dr. Clark.
All right, this evening, we have four recommendations for the board. The first recommendation is seeking approval for the 2025-26 open enrollment seat offerings. This recommendation was discussed at the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting and forwarded to the full board for approval. We would be offering one regular education open enrollment seat for the grades 4K, kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and ninth. We would be offering nine seats at the 10th grade and zero seats at all other grades for a total of 17 regular education open enrollment seats. We would have zero special education open enrollment seats. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the recommendation.
So I would make a motion to approve the recommendation as presented. I appreciated the information we got at PNF regarding where the class sizes are at and how these numbers were arrived at.
I will second that.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I, excuse me, I just have a question, Jared, and when is this reviewed again next? I know, I know that in the past, there were some questions after this initial.
Yeah, so that would be up to the board. Generally, we, or I shouldn't say generally, the last two years, we've reviewed it either in July or August.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
All right. Second recommendation this evening is seeking approval for the district's long-term capital improvement plan. This recommendation was discussed at the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting and forwarded to the board for approval. In order to use Fund 46 for a project, a project must be included in the long-term capital improvement plan. Approval of this plan, though, does not mean the projects included in the plan are being approved. Each project in the plan would individually come to the board for approval. So again, looking for a motion to approve the district's long-term capital improvement plan.
I will make a motion to approve the long-term capital improvement plan as presented.
Second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, there is. So looking at this further after the last PNF meeting, I do have some questions, especially in regard to the athletics for 32, 33, and 34, 35. Being that this is being approved to come out of Fund 46, correct me if I'm wrong, but the replacement of the turfs, I believe was supposed to be fundraised and/or specifically coming out of the athletics budget.
So again, the items on here, we're not necessarily saying we're, we're doing these. So when you get to the, those years, the board may decide not to do that. In terms of the actual funding of it, that's something that would come up at that point. You know, whether we use booster funds, whether we use some of the advertisement that goes on the different, you know, if you're talking about the football field or, or the softball. There are various ways to, to generate the funds. Part of the purpose for having it on here also, though, is knowing it is a big project and it will take some dollars to do. So, yeah, the full financing of it, it hasn't been determined yet because we don't even know what the dollar amount is going to be, but yeah.
I know, I, I did receive some questions from community members who were concerned.
Sure.
You know, and, and I'm sure the other PNF members, you know, looking at the budget forecasts, depending on if we see increases in state funding, if the Department of Education goes away and we see a decrease in federal funding, special, you know, is constantly increasing, you know, as we forecast out to 32, 33, 34, 35. You know, they were looking pretty lean. We were looking at some, some decent deficits, you know, and there were concerns raised to me that, you know, is this an appropriate expense of Fund 46 dollars? So I would like to request if we could have perhaps an, an asterisk on those or some sort of notation that it is not necessarily coming out of Fund 46. That like you had said, it is a notation that that's an expense coming up. But if there's something we could have that's a little more public facing to let people know that this is not a guaranteed thing that's going to be paid for through Fund 46 or other means. Because obviously, you know, 800,000 we're projecting now, it's probably going to be a lot more in the future. And if we're looking at facing deficits, we don't want to be cutting staffing or other things in order to pay for athletic fields.
We could, we certainly could add something at the bottom of the, of it. As I mentioned before, every one of these projects go individually before it. So, you know, over the last two years, we've, we've changed, modified. Even last year, I think we had three items on the, on the list for the 20, for the summer of 24. We ended up only doing two based on, on financial concern, so, yep.
Yep, and my concern is just for community members who don't understand that.
Sure.
Seeing this is kind of.
Sure.
Thank you.
And, and, and Kim, is the, the way it's presented on the internet or on the website or wherever, does it have some kind of statement like that on, just so people know that these aren't things that have been approved? They're just, this is just a, you know, plan and each individual item is going to, you know, depend on the circumstances at that point in time and alternative funding and who knows what else?
Yeah, I think the bottom of that page, I'm just trying to read the footnote underneath it. It does, it does describe any purchase in the amount of 50,000 must go through competitive bid and presented to the board for approval. But I also do think that as, as a requirement of having Fund 46, you must present your 10-year capital project plan every year to the board. So maybe it's just putting in that this, this is reviewed annually, reviewed and revised annually as per funding is available. Is that helpful? Okay. We can certainly, because it is every year, like I was going to say, every year at this time, we bring this to the board. Buildings and grounds technology does a lot of work to, as Jared and said, compile all the lists so that we know ahead of time, no matter where the funding is coming from, you know, that it needs to happen. There's also a much bigger, you know, bigger list beyond these years too. So we'll, we can definitely add my, in my comments, even on the background of it, that it's reviewed and revised annually and funding is discussed at that time as well.
Yeah, I know, it's just a plan. It's not like what's been approved and what's going forward.
It will, yeah, right. So really, you're approving today. That 25, 26 line is the work that will be done in the summer of '25. And that we want to get ahead on and start, yep, okay, we're going to go out and get bids on that. And then also the idea of having this 10-year plan and looking into the future and saying, we are trying to be fiscally responsible and knowing ahead what our plans are going to be.
And I think the note should be, I think it's good to have that note on there, but to be generic because it could really apply to any project.
Absolutely, yep. For example, one of person's Webster access points, I believe, may partially be funded by E-Rate so that, you know, we kind of, we always try to get other funding sources as well.
We had a pretty rigorous discussion on this at the PNF committee, and I think a good job was done just showing how this plan does indeed change year after year. Things get added, things get removed, things get moved sooner, moved later. And we had a good discussion on how it changed year to year. And I think that there's a good footnote on this plan that's in board docs for the public that does have that footnote that explains that individual projects on here do need to get approved by the board. So thank you for including that.
Any other questions?
I appreciate the feedback from board members as well as you're taking that and kind of on the fly, having a proposed addition to that language that's front-facing. I, I had questions to Dr. Clark before this meeting, specific about those two items. And really specifically because those two items came up in conversations at committee meetings where booster club money was mentioned and fundraising was mentioned. So in my mind, I, I do agree with, with board members struggle about keeping the language general because there's a lot of projects or proposed projects on here, planned projects, excuse me for that language there. But so even though that one committee discussed booster and fundraising, there's other items on here. So I think that more generic language makes sense, but just so that it is a little bit easier to understand is appreciated. Thank you.
You know, and in that discussion, I mean, I was, just with the turf field, just as a reminder, it's just not athletics that uses it. The high school uses it for fire class, the band uses it. It's not just an athletic field. And I mean, I'm sure as we get closer to that time, the board will get educated more on the actual all over, all-purpose use of that field. So I just want to point that out.
Any more discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
All right, thank you. The next recommendation this evening is seeking approval to use the Character Strong resource for the remainder of the 2024-25 school year with a complete resource review occurring during the summer of 2025. This recommendation was discussed at the November and December Curriculum Committee meetings. This resource was made available to all board members to review. Additionally, the resource is used during the homeroom pot time to reinforce Cedarburg PBIS roar behavior expectations for all students. Since every middle school teacher has a homeroom, the use of a common resource helps to create continuity in the lesson, ensuring that all students are receiving the same method with the same language. So again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the Webster pot time to be used for the remainder of the 24-25 school year with a complete resource review during this coming summer.
I'll second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
One question. So we are approving the use for the remainder of the school year with a complete resource review occurring this coming summer. Is there a way for us to add language that does not prevent this program? Should think, is there a way for us to add language that if we do not find a better program by the end of the summer, that Character Strong will continue? That, you know, if we find a better program, we will use that. But something that does not leave this so open-ended to where Webster is put in the same position as the elementary schools with no program. so open-ended to where Webster is put in the same position as the elementary schools with no program.
I kind of think that's the purpose of the summer, so.
But my concern is, we may say, well, we didn't find anything we like, and some may still say, well, we still don't like Character Strong, so we're just not going to do anything and end up in the same situation as the elementary.
Yeah, I think what what Dr. Clark's envisioning is a is a um uh basically an overall review. And it would be, I think what, uh it it mean if it, if if during that review, I I can't admit, but let's assume that it's that there's a better solution that I I don't know what 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 it would be, or maybe there isn't a better solution. Maybe the solution is doing something completely different. Don't know. I'd be a little uncomfortable um confining the 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 board, the administration. If we're gonna do a full review, I'd suggest we do that and then, you know, we can, I mean, the board has to prove anything in the summer anyhow, so I think that's, and and it would probably be presenting along the way, right?
Correct.
So.
Been working with Ally and Dan, we've actually started the review in the spring uh and provided updates to curriculum throughout, but.
I'd prefer not to put any restrictions on it.
Well, and and, you know, I understand there is going to be a review process. My concern, which is, you know, there there is a standing precedence for the concern that we very well might not have any type of programming for Webster come fall of twenty-twenty-five. And that is something I think we should be trying to avoid. You know, there needs to be, you know, the board needs to be held to a standard of we we are going to have these things because I know community members are getting frustrated at the fact that there is, you know, we've made no progress on programming for the elementaries. And it's it's spent quite some time. And I am legitimately concerned because of that, that Webster is going to end up going the same role.
I guess you could make a motion or amend the motion. See, depending on seconds, but I I'd prefer to let the administration do the work and not constrain the future board.
I would like to make a motion to amend the current motion uh to approve the use of Character Strong resource for the remainder of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with a complete resource review occurring during the summer of twenty-twenty-five with the insurance that some sort of program will be in existence for fall of twenty-six.
I'll second. I guess what's hard with that, can you repeat that language?
So essentially, it's it's the motion as listed along with an assurance that there will be some sort of Character Strong or SEL program in place for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
That's pretty vague.
Whether it's Character Strong or if something better is found, but the assurance that we are going to continue with some type of program in the fall of twenty-five, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
I think that's a hurt.
This is more vague, leaving it open to where the board, you know, some board members could say come the end of summer, well, we didn't find anything we like and we still don't like this, so we're just gonna wait till we find something. And that there's nothing in place.
So I think for me, what was helpful in reviewing this is really taking a look at, is it effective? Is it um you know, is this the route we want to go? And taking a look at curriculum the way we do all our other curriculums. And so I think that would, I would not really be in favor of saying we're definitely gonna do something without. I I think that puts us in a bind and obligates us to do something we may not be comfortable doing.
I agree with Kate Nitzel on this as well. I appreciate the recommendation, the way it's written in the curriculum committee. We really took um like a deep dive over two different uh meetings, looking specifically at Character Strong, but what was missing was kind of taking a step back and getting to look at and discuss out of all the different curriculums and options and tools out there, which resource is really gonna best support the PBIS character, I mean, uh behavior matrix. And we didn't really get to that part of the conversation as is there something better? Is there another option? And I think that's the goal of what Ally and Dr. Clark um and the principal Mr. Ringer plan on doing the summer, and I appreciate that. And uh that's my preferred option.
All right. My, excuse me. My um my recollection from that curriculum committee where there was a recommendation from administration staff didn't, was that it did not have that language regarding uh a review in the summer. If anyone's able to confirm or uh correct me on that, I would appreciate it. Um but I don't real, I don't recall that addition of with a complete resource review occurring during the twenty-twenty-five summer being part of what was recommended by staff who have been going through the process of looking at these resources. Um and I believe I've shared that from my perspective, what uh Webster, the staff at Webster have done is kind of found a a decent middle ground. We have families in this district who would like to see more resources, to be frank. And perhaps others that would like to see less. But what we have and what I feel has been presented to that uh that committee and any board members that were present at those meetings is a good middle ground. Um so I don't, you know, I think there's a couple of different directions people are going with the ultimate goal of hopefully having resources in place that match the needs of our students, help them with their success in middle school, and not have uh a potential repeat of what's gone on at the elementary school. So I did second uh uh board member Erickson's amended motion. Um and I believe that's what's getting voted on. Is that correct right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
I did hear a question in there.
Yes, yes, yes.
The mo, the what the recommendation was coming out of that um November uh curriculum committee meeting, and I have the minutes that we approved at our January meeting. Um, excuse me.
Excuse me, but I'm familiar with the minutes. I'm talking about the recommendation.
Read you the motion. You you asked what was the recommendation?
No, I'm asked, I, the original, the original um staff recommendation is not what the motion reflects. The staff recommendation is different than what was passed at the committee level. So all I'm saying is I I'm I'm familiar with our minutes. I don't need that redback, but I appreciate you looking that up.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Looks like that. Okay, the motion fails for uh five to two. So we go back to board member Scrubles' original motion. Is there any further discussion on that?
I just have one piece of discussion, and I don't know if this applies to this motion or not, but I just hope that in some way the um middle school is able to communicate to families because I think a lot of these are, you know, like meeting with people, getting to mayor's school. These are great discussions for the kids to have at home with their family. And so I just encourage the middle school to communicate these lessons with families. So maybe they'll take the time to discuss it. So that's just what I want to add. I don't know if it's appropriate with the the motion.
All right.
And then uh just so, just for my understanding, we have a motion on the floor to approve the use of Character Strong resources, excuse me, resource um for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year with a complete resource review occurring during the twenty-twenty-five summer. And Jer, uh Dr. Clark, uh you mentioned that that process was starting in the spring. Is there any need in other board members' views that this language needs to change if it's starting in the spring, or is summer sufficient?
In my opinion, the the language is sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
I had, I just wanted to share some thoughts on this uh, just curriculum in general. I've shared quite extensively at curriculum committee. Um but I know not everyone has attended, and so I just wanted to provide my perspective before we vote. So um just wanted to share that I just think as a district that we, when we wade into these waters, and by that I mean um adopting a social emotional learning curriculum, I just think that we need to tread lightly. Um it's an a area that's really grown rapidly in the last five years, and a concern that I have um in, that in practice, it it can be talking extensively in um a classroom setting, extensively on these lessons focused on emotions can sometimes delve into like almost like an unlicensed therapy session. And I'm not saying that that is the goal, that that's intent, that that happens every time. I'm just saying that it's a possibility and that there's some overlap um that's potentially concerning regarding what these governing social emotional learning of curriculum bodies, you know, CAFL is the group that oversees every single social emotional learning curriculum, that what this group thinks is best for the emotional well-being of a child could be in conflict with what a parent thinks is best for the emotional well-being of a child. I'm just saying that we need to tread lightly when we're getting into having curriculum on these topics. Um and because for me, this is a gray area, um I think that we need to make sure that the curriculum is truly necessary. And in this case, we're, we are being told that it's to support the PBIS uh behavior matrix and to keep kids, you know, on time, getting their homework turned in, being kind and respectful to each other. And I totally hear that. I get that. I like that. Um but if we do have a formal curriculum about it, around it, that it needs to be the very best out there and evidence-based. And I raise concern to the committee level um that I think that the evidence-based nature of Character Strong has been greatly oversold. It's all riding on one specific research study, which in my opinion is incredibly flawed because they did the um pre, you know, study survey before COVID, the COVID pandemic started. And then their post-survey where they got the results was during the pandemic. And the sample size was so greatly reduced as if they were hardly sampling any students that they had at the beginning of it. And I'm just saying, if we're gonna get into this area, let's have the very best. So I greatly appreciate the work that's going to be done this spring and summer to make sure that this is the best or that we're gonna find possibly something even better or that's a better um for our needs. But I just wanted to share this just to explain why I voted the way I did at the committee level and today. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to once again express my gratitude to the Webster administration and to the teachers and the staff um for doing the work that they have on Character Strong and for the presentations that they've given and showing how it is uh beneficial to our students um and how they feel that it is um a worthwhile program. And I hope to continue uh to see, you know, presentations on these types of programs in the future. But I just wanted to say thank you, you know, and I I definitely place my trust in the administration, uh who's on the ground every day with our students uh and sees what they experience to know uh that this is a valuable program. So thank you.
All right. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
All right, the last recommendation is regarding donations to the district. Uh this month, we have ninety-three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars from the Cedarburg Education Foundation to pu-support phase two of the Cedarburg High School Media VR Lab Grant. Eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars from the Cedarburg Education Foundation to support the connecting the community learning experience for CSD elementary students. Three thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and five cents from the Webster PTO to be used to purchase a large format printer for the Maker Space at Webster Middle School. Two thousand dollars from the CHS Athletic Booster Club to purchase a lacrosse netting system at Cedarburg High School. And five hundred dollars from the Ozaki Nonprofit Center as recognition of CHS students achieving the most volunteer hours at Illuminate Ozaki compared to any other local high school, public or private. Uh that donation will be used to update the CHS Brua Brutus, the Bulldog mascot uh costume. So the total donations, if the board approves this for January, will be a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty, ooh, eleven. Let me start over. One hundred eleven thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars and five cents. And then total, total donations to date for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year would be two hundred eighty thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty cents.
That is incredible.
So quick question of curiosity, uh how much updating did Brutus need?
Uh Casey is not here tonight. I do not know. No, I did not ask, and I do not know.
Dr. Clark, for um number two, is that an ongoing item? Is that new?
Uh no, that's new. That's uh, there is a uh VAS uh Visiting Artist Series Children's Program. Um and the majority of that, and it's a public program uh here at the CB, CPAC, I'm struggling tonight. Uh and and the majority of that money is spent on busing uh to get all of our elementary kids there and then the tickets.
And and I'm, and I'm sorry, I may have missed where this was. Where is the? Hold your pack. Okay, thank you.
And it, again, is part of the Visiting Artist Series.
Very generous uh donations.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I will second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Clark, um it'd be interesting to see, how long is this or what's the timeline on the um the lab, the media VR lab?
Uh the goal is to have it ready for the fall.
Maybe we can get an update on that at some point.
Yeah, definitely.
Next to see.
Yeah. Sure, yeah.
And a tour, yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
All right, so it takes us down to seven committee reports. Personal and Finance Committee met on January eighth. Kate Nitzel.
So the agenda items that evening, we're discussing the open enrollment seats, which we voted on tonight. We also uh had an informational topic of the Hawks Ridge Resolution, which was um dividing the lots at um subdivision that's being developed. We came up with a plan to divide the lots between Cedarburg and Grafton. And um that will be coming to a board meeting in the future. We also discussed the Right Way contract renewal and extension. Um we have to decide by February first if we are not going to continue, and we will be continuing. Uh we also discussed the audit review, which we also spoke about tonight. We had a budget update for where we are uh in this calendar year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Um brief discussion of those departments who are at budget, over budget, um and what the projection is. We also discussed the budget calendar, specifically how dates will fall this October in regards to when we receive a final information, when we have um a budget hearing and then vote on the final um budget. We also discussed different scenarios of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. We talked about the long-term capital improvement plan, which we also voted on tonight. And then lastly, we discussed food service balances and ways to recoup unpaid balances. We have a future meeting date of February twelfth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. Curriculum committee meeting met on January ninth, was the show?
Yes, we met January ninth. Um we had three topics. Each one was informational, meaning we didn't uh take any votes uh to recommend anything to the full board yet. Um first, we talked about a new AP physics resource, so a new textbook. That textbook is over ten years old, and in AP courses, the books need to be um no more than ten years old. So uh board members, if you'd like to take a look at that resource, it's called the Fundamentals of Physics, twelfth edition. Um that's in the board docs under the curriculum committee meeting. It's a PDF document if you want to take a look and planning on um reviewing that and voting on that um at the next curriculum committee meeting. The fiscal impact for that would be about two thousand dollars. Um next, we talked about two uh math pilots. So Algebra One, which is taught both at Webster and the high school, um and was last reviewed in two thousand sixteen, uh looking at doing a pilot for next school year. Uh so really high level at this point, discussions are just beginning at the math department. Um but wanted to uh give the committee a heads up on that. And then next, uh related to that, a geometry pilot, which is taught at the high school. And that was last updated in two thousand nine. And again, uh a pilot would be done for the next school year. So very important to the future, but um bit, really big topics. I just wanted to get uh awareness at the committee level for that. And our next meeting is February fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I will now entertain an order. I'm sorry, a motion, an order, a motion. Twenty-four. Would anyone kindly make that motion?
So moved. I will second that.
Motion and a second, and we will take a roll call vote. Um, Sharlin?
Aye.
Nitzel?
Aye.
Scruble?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
careers and I. It's unanimous. Motion passes and we will adjourn into executive session. We'll back the review of board for that.